Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgsville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, December 18th, 2023. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Father, we ask you to be with us as we conduct our meeting this evening. We thank you for all the blessings in our lives. We pray for all people, especially those in the city of North Ridgsville during this time of year. We ask that the joys of the holiday season be with us all, and we ask this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll. Swank?
Here.
Toth?
Here.
Abens?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Awig?
Here.
DeVries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Law Director?
Engineer?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Clerk or counsel? Here. Tonight, under the approval of minutes, we have before us the City Council meeting minutes dated December 4th, 2023. Do I hear any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Please note that council has also received the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals meeting minutes dated November 16th, 2023, the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes dated December 11th, 2023, the Planning Commission meeting minutes dated December 12th, 2023, and the Special Planning Commission meeting minutes dated December 14th, 2023. That brings us to our lobby session. As a reminder to those here in council chambers this evening, while the lobby session is not meant to be an interactive question and answer period in the interest of time, it is nonetheless an opportunity for the public to address city councils as well as the city administration regarding any matters that pertain to the business of city council or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgsville. Anybody who wishes to speak, we do ask that you speak from the podium, and you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. We do ask that you begin by stating your name and address for the record. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. We have several written submissions this evening, which I will take in the order in which they were received. So up first, Mrs. Kersey.
Good evening. Happy holidays to all of you.
Evening.
First off, my name is Shelley Kersey. I live at 37886 Stony Lake Drive in North Ridgsville, Ohio. First off, I have to thank you, Mr. Jacobs. You are the only person on council who has ever called me back with an answer to my question as to how much the police department review cost. You told me that the cost was $14,700. That being said, I had never heard a vote taken in public by the council as to how much should be spent for this investigation. I was believed that six council members were given, were approached by Corcoran and asked permission to pay out up to $25,000 without council's approval. As a matter of fact, I was informed that the council approved the spending of it, but I can find no minutes in any meeting where that vote was taken, and if there are any, I will stand corrected. That's a violation of the Sunshine Law, which our city charter agrees with, as found in Section 3.9 Meetings on Page 10 of the North Ridgsville City Charter. I'm again asking you to vote down the rule of three proposed by Mr. Corcoran. I do believe that some of our officers took the promotional testing, and the results were thrown out, stating that the test was not competitive. Or is it perhaps because those that took the test are not looked kindly upon by anyone on council or the administration? Or is it because of personal reasons, not training? Only these people know the answer, but we need to do better by our officers. I do know one thing. In the police department review, it was stated that the leadership and management training for all sergeants and lieutenants would be offered. How sad would it be that we have some highly qualified individuals who are looked over for strictly personal reasons? Perhaps you have heard that North Olmsted is offering lateral transfers. We have a former North Ridgsville officer on that force who is singing the praises of that department while being totally realistic. By the way, I also spoke with an officer of the North Olmsted Police Department. They do some off-duty work for one of the properties my employer manages. He told me that they are poised to take our officers. His exact words were, "You snooze, you lose." He was very nice, and we had a good talk about our PD. He understands our situation, but they are going after our best to come to the other side. It's not just North Olmsted. It's Avon, Avon Lake, and West Lake, and many more departments. What have we offered our department? Promises that were made and never kept. $14,700 spent, and the public was informed that they would immediately implement the following: mandatory leadership training and coaching for the chief with a focus on employee morale; department-wide training on professional behavior with a focus on reporting and investigative procedures; leadership and management training for all sergeants and lieutenants; and citywide performance evaluation training and social media policy training. Maybe another council member can answer the questions of whether any of these items have been complete and a report showing the improvement of the department. This is just the tip of the iceberg. If you choose to vote for the rule of three, which in my opinion is just asking for trouble, because let's face it, there's a whole lot of favoritism in this administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kersey. Up next, John Zingali. Mr. Zingali, if you could again state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is John Zingali. I live at 35112 Jason Drive. I want to speak this evening on T-132 des 2023, which is the rule of three. It's an ordinance that is improperly and unnecessarily attempting to change civil service rules regarding the police and fire departments promotional processes. As you're all aware, that on December 1st, I emailed each of you a admittedly wordy email regarding the inconsistencies and possible legal ramifications of staying the course on this rule of three change that's been floated so far. I appreciate Councilwoman Swank and Council President Jacobs for taking time to respond to that email as well. I also hope that the rest of you took some time to be able to reach out to whoever you might know in any of our safety services, just to get a general feel for if they feel this is good for the city or good for the department or the employees going forward. The current state of the civil service rules is still in conflict with the police and fire collective bargaining agreements, as well as Supreme Court rulings in Bardo v. Lindhurst and Myers v. Columbus. To ensure there's nothing left out, I'll give you a quick summary of how this, this change was implemented. On August 16th, there was a special meeting of the Civil Service Commission. Assistant Law Director Tony Morgan proposed a rule of three change to the promotional process. She stated that the city had previously followed the ORC and that, quote, "A lot of the surrounding cities use the rule of three, and it may be more common than just the one," meaning the highest scoring method. She clarified the mayor would conduct a process of selection after the top three were certified. At that time, the FD Chief Reese spoke out against the rule of three, said that it may deter participation in promotions. Chief Freeman spoke out against it as well, saying that there should be a known process with established criteria or a committee to avoid claims of bias. The Commissioner, Chairman of the Civil Service Commission, wanted to hear feedback from municipalities that use the rule of three. In addition, Chris Federin of the North Ridgsville Fire Department and I both mentioned that it would conflict with our current collective bargaining agreements. Lieutenant Leaf, the supervisor from the PD, also mentioned that it would conflict with theirs as well. Assistant Law Director Morgan said she'd look into the issues, and then not even two weeks later, there was a regular meeting in which the rules came to a vote. At that point, there was no discussion of any of the issues that were brought up previously or any of the other cities that were supposed to be gotten feedback from that used that. The rule changes were passed unanimously without much discussion. So we did some research, my wife and I, and we reached out to about eight comparable different surrounding agencies about their promotion processes. Lorraine, Elira, and North Olmsted, Avon Lake, Rocky River, and West Lake all use the person with the highest ranking. Avon and Strongsville use the rule of three. So clearly, the claim that the majority of the agencies around us use it is completely incorrect. Rocky River does have charter language, specific charter language that allows their Civil Service Commission the power to utilize the rule of three only for promotions regarding the chief and captain, which was, at least stated to us, one of the original intentions was to not have another issue with the chief of police come next time, because of how important that position is. When my wife spoke to the head of the Human Resources in Rocky River, he said the rule of three creates legal liability, and it's detrimental to ensuring the promotion of the most qualified individuals.
Mr. Zingali, pardon the interruption. Your three minutes has elapsed.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to give Mr. Zingali an additional three minutes.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to allow Mr. Zingali up to an additional three minutes to speak. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed? Go ahead, Mr. Zingali.
Thank you all. I do appreciate it. I'm almost done. So during a civil service meeting in November, while we were discussing the issues with promotional tests, Law Director Moriarty provided additional rule of three wording from Medina and Lakewood. The city of Medina has the same required explicit charter language that allows them to have that rule of three. However, the cities of Avon, Lakewood, and Strongsville do not have conflicting contract language, the same as we do at this point. Representatives from the police department have repeatedly attempted to have conversations with the city administration on how to address this. We've shared contractual wording from the Lorraine PD regarding how their promotional tests are conducted to assess leadership ability. They have specific wording in there regarding how it should be done. However, there's been no comment or response whatsoever to these suggestions or discussion attempts. The mayor's remained consistent throughout that he is the appointing authority, and so that he would be the one to select who would be promoted, regardless if we had a panel or not. The rule of three was forced through the Civil Service Commission in a rush despite numerous objections. Continuing to push the rule of three as it is now will cause infighting between frontline units in the safety services, inevitable legal issues, and deter good candidates from considering promotion tests. Until it's addressed through either charter amendment or contractual language, it is simply not a valid alternative, and voting to approve this ordinance is nothing more than voting for a political agenda over the legal and best interests of those who keep our city safe. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zingali. Up next, Cali Zingali. Can please begin by stating your name and address for the record?
Sure thing. My name is Cali Zingali. I live at 35112 Jason Drive. This is kind of all out the window, because I feel like previous people have kind of made some of the points I would like to make. So sorry if this is a little choppy. I'm going to have to kind of work around that. I do want to take a second to thank the members of council, you know who you are, who took the time to reach out to members of our police and fire regarding this ordinance. I know I called everybody out, and I appreciate the people that listened. And if you didn't, why not? It's not hard. We all work in this city, or you all work in this city, and they're working here, too. A matter of fact, our Ward Two representative and our future Ward Two representative were both in attendance at two different Civil Service Commission meetings, and they did not take that opportunity to reach out to any of the officers present to maybe see how they felt. Well, it seemed like the perfect opportunity to do so. I'm not sure why that was ignored. I know you guys have been made aware of the legal concerns, and I think, to quote our mayor, "We all know how this is going to end," right? The traditional civil service hiring and promotion process may not be perfect, but it's been in place and it's been done the way it's been done for a reason, and that's to prevent biased, like things with favoritism and discrimination. I am very frustrated with the administration and the choices they've made, but I don't hate this city, as I've been accused of. I actually care a lot about this city. I care about the people in the city, the businesses in this city, and I care about the people that keep this city safe. Obviously, one of them, but they're all friends. They're all people we care about. The city just saddled all of our officers that are seeking promotion with more work by eliminating those test results. On the November 8th Civil Service Commission meeting, the commission and about 10 officers seemed to reach an agreement that would prevent them from having to offer another test at the cost of the city. And it's not going to require officers to study over and over for another test within six months of the previous one. Those discussions encouraged our officers to protest questions on the test. And then, after they did a protest meeting, guess what? We're just going to throw the whole test out because you protested too many questions. So what's the answer? Should they have protested, or should they have not? Everybody's basically said what I wanted to say, but I just, I want to thank council again, those of you that took the time to reach out, those of you that were able to reach out, and I just, I appreciate the time you took. And those that refused, maybe wake up, maybe speak to the people in this city that work for you. Thank you.
And up next, we have Gary Chapczynski.
Hello. My name is Gary Chapczynski. I live at 33699 Browning Drive in beautiful North Ridgsville, Ohio. I think I'm here simply, first and foremost, to say thank you to the mayor, the city engineer, the finance department, the four ward members we got, the three councilmen at large, Jason being the president of the council, largely because I went through to investigate what actually happens in North Ridgsville's infrastructure and government, and I came up with some notes of interest, like the number of committees that the council actually participates on in one fashion or another, and the departments that are actually managed by this organization. And I was actually amazed that there's roughly around 130 members of what I would call the government infrastructure. That's including all you, plus our service workers who take care of plowing the roads and maintaining the roads. We also have the building department issuing permits, taking care of the building, the citizens' building structures. We actually maintain three cemeteries, which I didn't even realize we do that. But we maintain them by issuing lots and fees for using it. We have an engineering department, which I would imagine is quite busy, taking care of designing and inspecting the capital improvements, the budget preparations, the grant preparations, the projects, including things like our famous, hopefully, one-day peanut roundabout, which I am so looking forward to. We have a finance department, which obviously gets the money, invests the money, and then gives it away. Okay, they pay the bills. I did look at the finance report, and after about 150 pages, I put it aside. The fire department includes 40 members, which I was also amazed at, but they also provide things like free child seat installation and maintenance. They also go around and do the trunk and treat. They also have ride-a-truck kind of thing. They also protect us. And in the month of November, they had 430-some incidences where the EMS or the fire department actually had to go out and do something for city of North Ridgsville residents. We also maintain the French Creek Water Treatment Plant with, with Mrs. Swank and I went and visited, and it's an amazing facility. We also have the mayor's court. I have no idea how many people are part of the mayor's court, but I'm guessing at least one. We have a park and rec department, of which I was also participating in. I was a city, I was a commissioner of the soccer league for a number of years. I coached baseball and soccer. I also refereed soccer. Park and rec is an amazing thing. Then we have the police department, which I believe you may be somewhat familiar with some of the operations of that, but they have many programs, including school resource officers that are part of response teams. Dispatch units. We actually have a dispatch unit on site, which I didn't even realize. So there's, they sponsor the safety bill.
Mr. Chapczynski, pardon the interruption. Your three minutes has elapsed.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to give Mr. Chapczynski an additional three minutes.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to allow Mr. Chapczynski up to an additional three minutes to speak. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Please continue.
You're all kind. Thank you. There's a public utilities department, which we're all familiar with, because we get a bill from them every month, and of course, we are required to pay that. Then, what I really enjoy is the fact that we have a senior center that actually provides a lot of activities for the older adults, like me, and some day like you guys. There's a service department. What I didn't realize is that they actually accept motor oil, clean motor oil. Good, good deal. So the various committees that I know that you deal with are the administrative committee, the building and lands, finance committee, safety committee, street sidewalks and bridges, utilities, park and rec liaison, planning commission liaison, zoning and building and housing. So all in all, there's about 14 departments that you guys must maintain, about 130 people, countless numbers of activities. So the only thing I could say is I'm proud to live in North Ridgsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapczynski. All right. I don't have any additional written submissions this evening. Is there anybody else in attendance who would like to address council during the lobby All right, seeing none, the lobby session is now closed. We will move on to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are several pieces of legislation that I will ask for the emergency clause on, first one being T-141, which is an increase in the sludge hauling ordinance that we have passed back in, earlier in 2023. We need some additional money to remove the sludge that has been created, and we've talked about this from time to time, about the difficulties of getting the sludge onto farm fields. So in order to get it out of our plant, we're going to ask for the emergency clause. T-145 is a moratorium on issuance and processing of permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, processors, or other businesses intending to process, provide, or sell marijuana within the city, and you know, that is something where the state is still working on those rules. We want to make sure that they finish their work before we allow any of those businesses to take foot in North Ridgsville. And then, T-147 is ordinance regarding the French Creek wastewater treatment plant with the upgrade of the concrete, I'm sorry, the complete mix tank aeration and mixing systems. We discussed this several times, including at the budget last year in November. This project, we recently passed a resolution increasing the amount that we were allowed to get as a loan from the ODWA, but we need to amend the ordinance to allow that to move forward as well. And then, T-137 is updating full-time and part-time classifications and Section 8 vacation. That is one that we'll ask for the emergency clause, so that way we can start off or finish this up before the end of the year, because it is retroactive to the beginning of 2023. There has been a couple of different notifications that went out about the e-newsletter that we're switching to. Currently, we have a newsletter that goes out four times a year, and we're looking to move that to once a month in order to provide more timely information to the public, but we're looking to switch that over to an electronic version instead of a mailed version. So if you're interested in receiving that monthly newsletter, go to our city's website, look for the e-news section, and provide us with your email address, and you'll be on that list to receive that. We have some holidays coming up, and that means there'll be some delays on trash pickup. There will be a one-day delay during the week of Christmas and New Year's, so they'll be picking up on the 27th and January 3rd, so Wednesday of both of those weeks. And then, we still pick up Christmas trees. They'll be picked up at curbside during the first two weeks of January. City Hall offices will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, the 25th and 26th of December in observance of Christmas, and then also on Monday, January 1st, in observance of New Year's Day. I wish all of you and your families and all the residents a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy new year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. TC Energy will be working throughout our city until the end of January, installing over 12,000 feet of cathodic protection along their high-pressure gas main. Most of their work runs alongside First Energy's transmission easement, all the way from the intersection at Mills and Stony, at the Avon City Limit, all the way to Lorraine Road at the North Olmsted City Limit. Engineering is currently working with the aerial utility companies at the intersection of State Route 83 and Chestnut Ridge Road to relocate the necessary utility poles to accommodate the upcoming roundabout construction, which is tentatively slated to start in April of next year. Engineering Department is still actively pursuing finding an assistant city engineer, so if you know of anyone, please direct them to the North Ridgsville Employment homepage, where you will find more details. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. Before council tonight is T-142, T-143, and T-144, the financial legislation. Just prior to this meeting, I've sent council a memorandum explaining the details of the appropriation amendment, the resolution authorizing fund transfer, and also the details on the resolution amending the advance from the general fund to the ODNR grant fund. I would like to ask council to consider adopting this legislation this evening with the emergency clause to provide the finance department the necessary resources to meet our financial obligations. In addition, earlier today, I've provided council and the administration the November 2023 financial report, which is also viewable on the city's website. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Please note that council has also received the November 2023 Water Distribution and EPA Report, the November 2023 Building Division Report, the November 2023 Fire Department Report, and the November 2023 Mayor's Court Report. We do not have any council committee reports on tonight's agenda. There are two pieces of correspondence. Clerk, if you could please read the first memorandum.
Memorandum from Director of Finance, April Wilkerson, the review of the Solid Waste Management Fund. And there was also a memorandum from Project Engineer Eric Brown, Stormwater Utility Base Rate Annual Adjustment for 2024.
Under new business, there were two actions made by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting on December 12th, 2023. Clerk, could you please read the first action regarding Animal Clinic Northview?
First action was Animal Clinic Northview 36400 Center Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700028101167. Applicant Brian Greenfield, Talon LLC 314 Churchill Hubbard Road, Youngstown, Ohio 44505. Proposal consists of constructing a 1,325 square-foot, single-story addition onto Animal Clinic Northview, property zone B5, Architectural Business District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of four to zero, with the condition that all improvements meet the stormwater ordinance within the city of North Ridgsville.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens?
It's good to see this business is doing well, and they're getting quite a reputation around northern Ohio, and as a result, they need to expand for more examination rooms so their customers don't have to wait as long. Therefore, I move to approve.
It was moved by Abens and seconded by Winkle to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the addition to Animal Clinic Northview. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Engineer 7-0. Clerk, please read the second action regarding Pleasant Avenue.
Thomas Kelly, Pleasant Avenue 0700008113040405678. Owner, Thomas Kelly, 33256 Center Ridge Road, North Ridgsville, Ohio 44039. Proposal consists of a street vacation of, occasion of, portion of a Pleasant Avenue to allow for expanded parking for budding business at 33290 Center Ridge Road, property zone B3 Highway Commercial District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of four-nothing, with the condition to add the waterline easement within the street vacation.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens?
This is in connection to the century end. The owner is presently rehabbing the building. The owner is presently rehabbing the building, and quite frankly, he has found some interesting historical evidence of that particular location. Furthermore, he needs that area for additional parking. And at this point, that part of Pleasant Avenue is only a paper road. And so, and furthermore, what it'll also do is limit any further development along Pleasant Avenue. Therefore, I move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Abins and seconded by Winkle to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the vacation of a portion of Pleasant Avenue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. The Planning Commission also took action at their special meeting on December 14th, 2023. Clerk, if you could please read the action regarding vacancy holding LLC.
39097, Center Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700046108012 and 013. Applicant Richard Cook, vacancy holdings LLC, 39097, Center Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039. Proposal consists of rezoning two parcels currently zoned B3 Highway Commercial District to I-2 Light Industrial District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of four to nothing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abins.
This property is the former Woodloft, and this company is moving from a Beckett location to here. Furthermore, this particular location is very conveniently located to the rest of the I-2 area. And they're planning on improving this particular property, both in building and also site. Therefore, I move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Abins and seconded by Winkle to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the rezoning of two parcels on Center Ridge Road from B3 Highway District to I-2 Light Industrial District. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. Before moving on from new business, I would like to make a motion to suspend the bylaws and amend tonight's agenda to remove T-140 from third readings and table it until our next regular council meeting. This is to allow time for the public hearing to take place on January 2nd.
Second.
The motion was made by Jacobs and seconded by Winkle to suspend the bylaws and remove T-140 from third readings on tonight's agenda and tabling it until the next meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. That brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess?
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Recess has been dispensed. We'll move on to first readings, and up first is T-141.
T-141-2023, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6086-2023 regarding sludge hauling by increasing the amount from $400,000 to $500,000 annually.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to dispense with the second and third readings for T-141. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, we've discussed this on multiple occasions. You know, we normally could get onto farm fields at a cheaper price. That has been problematic for a number of reasons throughout the year. So we are hauling the sludge to the dump, and that is more costly. And we've talked about it in this, before this body before. We need to increase the amount to 500,000 in order to get rid of the sludge that we have until, for the remainder of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to dispense with the second and third readings for T-141. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Move to add the emergency clause in order to improve the health, safety, and welfare of those residents that live around the French Creek wastewater treatment plant and our own residents as well.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to add the emergency clause to T-141 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to adopt T-141 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries now and it becomes ordinance number 6125-2023.
T-142?
T-142-2023, a resolution amending Resolution 1431-2018, approving in advance from the general fund of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for T-142. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to T-142 for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by the ma, excuse me, it was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt T-142 with that emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
The motion carries and has become Resolution Number 1623-2023.
T-143?
T-143-2023, a resolution authorizing fund transfers.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for T-143. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause for, again, the reasons stated by the Director of Finance.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to T-143 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt T-143 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and it becomes Resolution Number 1624-2023.
T-144?
T-144-2023, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6031-2022, the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2023.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Through the chair to the Director of Finance, what is the reason for the amended version of this?
The amended version includes an increase for the French Creek Repair and Improvement Fund as a result of the bids associated with the sludge processing building that was bid out. Council approved the ordinance to increase the cost of that project on November 6th. This is the appropriation that goes along with that in order for us to approve the contract.
Thank you. Mr. President, motion to amend T-144 to the most recent version submitted by the Director of Finance.
Second.
The motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to amend T-144 by substitution with the version that you have at your desks this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
The motion has amended T-144.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third reading for T-144.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for T-144 amended. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
And, Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance so that we can follow our appropriations guidelines.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to T-144 amended for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt T-144 amended with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and becomes ordinance number 6126-2023.
T-145?
T-145-2023, a resolution imposing an immediate moratorium on the issuance and processing of permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, processors, or other North Ridgeville businesses intending to process, provide, or sell marijuana within the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by DeVries to dispense with the second and third readings for T-145. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, we already have a more, a prohibition on medical marijuana businesses in the city. This is designed to address the recreational issue, which the state, as we've mentioned, is, they're still working that out as far as those rules are concerned. So we're just trying to give us some more time so that way we know what those rules are.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by DeVries to dispense with the second and third readings for T-145. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated previously.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by DeVries to add the emergency clause to T-145 for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by DeVries to adopt T-145 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and becomes Resolution Number 1625-2023.
T-146?
T-146-2023, an ordinance vacating a portion of Pleasant Street.
At this time, I'll make a motion to amend T-146. The proper name of the street is Pleasant Avenue as opposed to Pleasant Street. So the motion is to amend T-146 to replace the word "street" with the word "avenue" each time it appears throughout the ordinance and in the title.
Second.
Motion was made by Jacobs and seconded by Swink to amend T-146 replacing the word "street" with "avenue." Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 146 is amended.
T-147?
T-147-2023, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6080-2023, which authorized the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the placement and upgrade of the complete mix tank aeration and mixing system for the French Creek wastewater treatment plant by increasing the dollar amount from 6.7 million dollars to 8,284,679.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to dispense with the second and third readings for T-147. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated in my report earlier.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to add the emergency clause to T-147 for the reasons stated earlier by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Abins to adopt T-147 with the emergency to adopt T-147 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and becomes ordinance number 6127-2023.
T-148?
T-148-2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 1480 and Chapter 660, and repealing Chapter 1476 and Chapter 650 of the North Ridgeville codified ordinances to make improvements and clarifications to requirements for property maintenance.
T-148 will be referred to the Buildings and Lands Committee. All right, moving on to second readings. Up first is T-135.
T-135-2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the Maddock Road Box Culvert Over Watson Ditch and other appurtenances in an amount not to exceed $440,000.
T-137?
T-137-2023, an ordinance amending Exhibits A, B, and C of ordinance number 6065-2023 by updating full and part-time classifications in Section 8 Vacation.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the third reading.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the third reading for T-137. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, as I mentioned earlier, this is to be retroactive back to the beginning of this year. In order for that to happen, we don't like to cross years. So if we do not pass this this evening, then that would exactly happen. So I'll ask for the emergency clause on this.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the third reading for T-137. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to T-137 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt T-137 with that emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.